Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Something, Peter, that we would like to make an announcement about what we just voted in executive session?
Yes, we would like to make an announcement about it. I can do that now if you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you. And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Great. So the board just came out of executive session to consider a memorandum of agreement with Unit B of the AFSMI Union, which represents six of our management positions. And the board saw fit to approve a one-year agreement for fiscal year 2001. That's the year that began this past July and ends this coming June. It includes a 2% wage increase and no other economic items. And this is in line with the other agreements previously approved for this year by the board.
Great. Thank you, Peter. I appreciate that. And let me just read this summary of what we do at the beginning, just remind people how the meeting's being conducted. And then we will do the pledge and start the meeting. So I've previously called this meeting to order, and we have confirmed Lance Suso, town manager. We also have Peter Johnson's assistant town manager. And we have folks from IT assisting us as always. This meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with the governor's orders as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And a reminder to folks that they are able to participate in this meeting as it's taking place by going to the selectmen's website. You will see the instructions for connecting to this Zoom meeting. And once connected, you will be able to access the chat feature to make your comments, to ask to speak on any issue that is on our agenda tonight for which we are taking comments. Also, just a reminder that we will take any emails from individuals. If you extract matter, we will do so. We recognize some individuals are not able or are not comfortable participating in Zoom, but we want to make sure that each individual in town is able to weigh in on the subjects before us. Further, just a reminder, when we receive emails, you'll only get a response in general from one, or maybe two of us. We try to designate the chair or the vice-chair to respond so that we don't run afoul of open meeting law. But all emails that are received are read by all members of the board. So the comments that we've received about any issue before us, we have read before we meet this evening. Just to keep things moving smoothly, please put your microphone off if you join us. Keep your microphone off until we call on you. It just helps to minimize some of that background noise. And if you have any questions, we have a lot of help here with our IT so we can figure out how to help people participate. Okay? And with that, I would ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The connections were not helping us on that.
No, it's looking to me like some of the connections are a little bit choppy tonight. So we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
We'll do our best. When Zoom goes bad, we're a little bit powerless, but we'll bear with us, folks, as we move through. So the first order of business is proclamation, Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. It's their 90th institution, excuse me, it's their 90th anniversary. And so Doug Brown, if you'd like to read that, please.
Okay. Happy birthday, HOI. Whereas Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, known to all by its acronym W-H-O-I, or HOI, was founded in 1930 in the village of Woods Hole, Falmouth, Massachusetts. At that time, it joined a thriving ocean science community that included the Marine Biological Laboratory and the National Marine Fisheries Service. Woods Hole was selected from among many potential sites given this established scientific research community. Extensive library facility, ready access both to the deep sea and to the contrasting ocean conditions, both north and south of Cape Cod. An existing small but deep-water harbor suitable for birthing oceanographic vessels and its proximity to several universities. Whereas, HOI has become a world-renowned research institution as its mission statement confirms: dedicated to advancing knowledge of the ocean and its connection with the Earth's systems through a sustained commitment to excellence in science, engineering, education, and to the application of this knowledge to problem-facing society. Whereas, HOI's vision statement recognizes the ocean as a defining feature of our planet and crucial to life on Earth, yet it remains one of the planet's last unexplored frontiers. For this reason, HOI scientists and engineers are committed to understanding all facets of the ocean, as well as its complex connections with Earth's atmosphere, land, ice, seafloor, and life, including humanity. This is essential not only to advance knowledge about our planet, but also to ensure society's long-term welfare and to help guide human stewardship of the environment. Whereas, HOI is a major employer and economic generator for the town of Falmouth and the Commonwealth, bringing a diversity of highly talented and experienced individuals who have come to call Falmouth home and who contribute considerably to the quality of life in our area. Now there be it resolved that the town of Falmouth issues our heartiest congratulations and best wishes to HOI upon your 90th anniversary. May your world-class scientific endeavors and research continue to inspire, inform, and transform the lives of all and many, and may you continue to call Woods Hole and the town of Falmouth your proud home. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on the 19th day of October 2020. Megan English Braga Chair, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Nancy R. Taylor, Falmouth Select Board.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor? English Braga, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones, aye.
Great.
90 years, that's long.
Thank you. I may, yes, really just a wonderful contribution to our community and lots of exciting, as we know, lots of exciting projects in the works for HOI as they kind of grow and lean into that next phase. So wish them well. Next, recognition. Does anyone have anything in particular? Sam?
No, I just wanted to say, well, in conjunction with HOI, a lot of support from their staff of our school programs as well, a lot of special programs for our students. They really have enriched the education that we've been able to offer our school students. So just wanted to mention that in addition.
And I guess for recognition, it just reminded me today of being 1019, reminded me of our local 1019 Foundation that was founded in memory of the two young kids that were killed on Thomas Lambeau's Road. Was that two years ago or more? And the 1019 Foundation is still active and supporting kids in youth sports and so other activities in Falmouth. So thanks to them for doing their good work.
Great reminder about that. Thank you, Doug. Anything else? Okay. Any announcements? We have a couple listed that we're going to get an update on, but just any other announcements from any members of the board? Okay. Mr. Suso, did you want to just update us on those two? The machine gun range update and the Halloween update?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Regarding machine gun update, I know there's been quite a bit of enhanced publicity from other communities as well, essentially following the inquiry from the Falmouth Select Board. And as we noted at your last meeting, we had the opportunity to attend a presentation, a public presentation for the Select Board Chairs and Town Managers of the Upper Cape Communities. And that was followed by a virtual meeting that we noted at your last Select Board meeting where that the public could attend. It was limited to 100 Zoom participants, but there was also additional information provided. And I believe, my understanding is, this remains a work in progress. Certainly, this board has expressed your concerns about the potential issues that are arising here, environmental and otherwise. And we did get some good feedback at the public session, but we anticipated more dialogue will be forthcoming in the public arena. And we continue to encourage residents to also forward concerns and issues to the contact people that are noted at Joint Base Cape Cod. And also feel free to copy the Select Board in the Town Manager's Office as well. And it may be that other members of the board would like to comment. I know that Megan and Doug have both been, Doug Brown significantly involved in some of these meetings that I've been a part of as well.
Great. Thank you, Julian. Go ahead, Doug Brown.
I'd like to comment that although I was not able to attend the virtual meeting with the scientific review board, some of my friends did manage to log on even though there was only 100 spaces. And they said it was a very difficult meeting to really get much good information out of because it was, you know, so many people trying to talk and comment. And I guess it was pretty difficult to manage.
Yeah. And hopefully, as Julian said, the conversation will continue. I had to log off and log back in, but I think, Julian, did you note that the process they're at now is they are compiling responses to all of the public input that they received during the comment period. And then another document will be created in response to that. So there'll be further opportunities to sort of weigh in and take a look at what the responses are to the number of concerns that were raised during public comment.
Did we get an answer to our request to expand the public comment timeframe? Because we didn't really get to comment as a board.
Yeah, they didn't expand it. So, but I think our concerns were heard loud and clear. I mean, we received a sort of private one-on-one in terms of, you know, just for Falmouth, they gave us a presentation and then held a previously unscheduled presentation at the base for all town, you know, town managers and chairs or vice-chairs. So I think that our concerns that we've heard from citizens that we expressed ourselves were definitely heard and have, I think frankly, generated this latest component, helped to generate this latest component of outreach. So.
And do you know, are they going to take those comments from that last meeting and make that part of the record as a public comment as well? You know, I mean, it seems a shame that we're not actually on record with the public comment officially.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. I think that the public, I mean, I think it's fairly regimented that the public comment that they're required to respond to, I believe, are the public comments that they received in that period of time, that's that 30-day period. So I don't think they're responding, in the response document they create will not have a response to us specifically. But they received hundreds and hundreds, I believe, of comments. So I'm sure those covered the concerns that we've tried to pass on as well. But your point is well taken. We had hoped that they would give that, you know, additional time so that we could have an official meet as a board and have an official comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Julian?
Madam Chair, just a reminder that although, given the timing, as you noted, the board was not able to host a public discussion about this, we do have a letter in for the record on behalf of the Chair and Vice Chair that I transmitted to the appropriate authorities within the necessary timeframe that expressed concerns about environmental and related issues and the volume of concerns that residents had been raising. So that was an early comment that is in there for the record as well. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Thank you for that correction. So we do have something on record during the period.
Right.
Nancy?
There's a long history to this issue, and I'm trying to do some research around what's happened in the past around this. And I think going back to Governor Salucci, I'm just trying to get myself caught up. It doesn't appear as though this is a new issue. And I think this board needs to be very thoughtful in moving forward on this issue.
On the communication component, specifically, are you speaking about?
The whole process and what they're asking for right now. There appears to be, as I'm researching it more, quite a long history around this and a political piece as well.
Interestingly, I received an email from a lady who lives in, I just forgot which town it is, but it's about Fort Devens. And she said that that facility is also going through permitting for a machine gun range. So I don't know if that's just a backup plan in case ours meets too much opposition, or if they actually want to put one there, too. Another interesting fact, I thought.
Great. Thank you. So more conversation to come. And Julian, did you just want to highlight the press release that you had sent out last week about Halloween? We had a lot of questions about what's happening during COVID. And so just wanted to put some information out there, if you would.
Certainly. Happy to do so. As you noted, and this is on the town website, of course, traditional Halloween will occur, of course, on Saturday, October 31st. And consistent with maintaining public health and safety during the COVID-19 pandemic, the town strongly encourages all those who would participate in the traditional trick-or-treat activities to do so between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 31st, traditional Halloween. In addition, we strongly encourage all Falmouth residents to closely follow an attached listing of do's and don'ts. And these are consistent with guidelines of Governor Baker and the Commonwealth Department of Public Health. And I thank my colleague, Health Agent Scott McGann, for his assistance in assembling those. And we also, we tell residents to please enjoy the holiday, but take all necessary precautions to safeguard young people, including yourselves and all members of your families. That release issued by the town last week, along with the do's and don'ts, which are a fairly long list. Madam Chair, I won't necessarily go through that, but it talks about when trick-or-treating or any kind of social gatherings, the kinds of things that are allowable and the kind of things that are to be avoided to maintain health and safety during this most challenging time. And again, this is listed on our town website. A copy was sent to School Superintendent Lori Dorr. And to the best of my knowledge, a copy either has been or will be, with Lori's terrific assistance, will be generated and made available to school families for their information.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, now we are going to have public comment. This is a period of time for individuals to make a statement up to two minutes in length about an item that is not on our agenda this evening. I do not currently see anything in the chat. Does anyone have any emails where folks asked you to read them as a public comment? Okay, I didn't receive any. So I will keep my eye open in case somebody is just late into logging into this, but I don't see anything presently. Okay, next, we are going to move to summary of actions. Approve application for new ownership and management of common victor license, Munichus Cafe LLC, DBA Munichus Cafe, 460 Walk White Highway, East Falmouth. And do we have applicant present? Hi, good evening. Oh, you're just muted.
I'm unmuting. There we go.
All right, there we go. Welcome. Could you just introduce yourself and welcome?
Thank you very much. I'm Bob Siegel, and this is Jennifer Bonenberger.
Welcome to both of you. We have your paperwork here in front of us, just taking a look. Do any members of the board have any particular questions about this application?
I don't have any questions. I think the package is complete, and I didn't see any negative referrals.
It looked like all the departments were in favor with it. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a move approval.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. By roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Well, that was easy. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Good luck with the business.
Thank you. Oh, we will. That's one of my favorite spots. So in good hands. Take care.
Yeah, glad to see you. Good luck.
Take care. Thanks.
Okay, next, we're going to move into administrative orders. Vote to accept donation from the Tony Hawk Foundation in the amount of $7,500 for use in the construction of the Falmouth Skate Park. This is the remaining funds that Sandy, there she is, reminded us about when we met a couple of weeks ago, that it was really hard sought after and won funds that need to go to construction. So welcome, Sandy.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'll just go over real quick. I'm the treasurer of Falmouth Together We Can Incorporated. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, of which we have a number of individuals and groups umbrellaed under us that all do wonderful things for the town. But under Dr. Bliler and the Skate Park Association, we had raised money, and $7,500 was a grant from the Tony Hawk Foundation specifically designated for skate park construction. So I have here a check made out to the town of Falmouth in hopes that you will accept this donation. And I will donate that money to the town to go towards construction. I've talked with Jennifer Petit, and I'm assuming that's who I would give the check to if you accept it.
You can drop it off to me. I'm sure my kids will like a small skate park in the backyard. But no, that's wonderful, Sandy. And I just want to thank you for reminding us that those funds were still there to sort of finish up this project. So any questions for Sandy? Okay, do I have a motion to accept that donation?
Patterson, still move.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Brown, second. I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. By roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you so much, Sandy. We appreciate it.
And who sends a thank you note?
Yeah, can I just say one thing? Can I ask the town if they would just send a letter of acceptance of the money and maybe a thank you to the Tony Hawk Foundation? And we can include that letter when we do our final write-off to Tony Hawk. write-off to Tony Hawk about this grant. They also want us to have pictures of the skate park. And I know the town has some wonderful ones, but I can get those from DPW.
Great. Thank you Sandy. So Julian, if we can just make note of that. Thank you. Have a great night.
Very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, next, under special, excuse me, under administrative orders, vote to approve Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution requests for conservation restriction of 4.32 acres at the Quissette campus. And I believe Attorney Ahmed is going to join us. I know we had a letter in our packet. There he is. Good evening.
Hi, to all of you. Thank you very much. I represent Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. And the request is for the town's approval of a conservation restriction on a portion of their Quissette campus. This is actually the fourth in a series of conservation restrictions that have been placed on the portion of the Quissette campus fairly close to Woods Hole Road, some of it actually on the Woods Hole Road. And these conservation restrictions, which with this additional 4.32 acres will now be over 20 acres, are, have been requirements of permitting agencies, either the local conservation commission or in most cases, and in this case, a requirement of the Cape Cod Commission. The Oceanographic has under construction on the Quissette campus, a 50,000 square foot research facility. It went to the Cape Cod Commission for approval and this conservation restriction is in accordance with that approval. The Conservation Commission has reviewed this restriction and a couple of weeks ago endorsed it, agreed to it and issued what's called a municipal certification, which is a statement of the benefits to be achieved by the public with the setting aside of this land for conservation purposes. You have copies of the proposed restriction. Of course, it's the same form as has been approved by the town in the past. I know the form has been reviewed by town council and approved as to form. If you would like, I can probably share a my screen and show the, a plan of this area, but I'll just tell you that it adds to the existing conservation restriction areas that are on the Woods Hole Oceanographic Quissette campus. If you are ready to approve it, that'd be great. If you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Great, thank you. Doug Jones, go ahead. You have a question?
Yeah, I think the conservation restriction is great. I would love to see where the new construction is happening. Just I think there are some neighbors who are concerned about some of the clear cutting and what the plan is going forward as to what is prompting this need for the conservation restriction. So if there's any way we can look at the plan and see where the new clearing is happening, that would be great.
Well, do you see the plan now?
Yep.
Okay, so I've successfully shared it. Toward the right side of the plan, which shows the Quissette campus, the portion closest to Woods Hole and between the Woods Hole Road and Oyster Pond Road. You can see the dark shaded so-called NQF building. NQF stands for New Q, New Quissette Facility. I'm sure they'd like to name it for somebody someday. But that's the building and it's actually under construction, Doug. All the clearing for it's already been done. The, when I looked at it about two weeks ago before the Conservation Commission hearing, looked like the steel for the 35 foot tall, I think that's the height of it. Building was already all erected. So they've been working on this building for quite some time. This portion of the Quissette campus, I believe is, it's 123 acres. So it's a rather large. You can see that the building is set back a significant distance from the Woods Hole Road. And you can see that the area designated for conservation restriction, which is the narrow slanted lines that are to the west, that is towards Woods Hole Road from the construction site. You can see that they provide a substantial buffer to, to a Butters. And they also, those, those acres expand the protection to two vernal pools, which are shown on, on the plan. I hope that answers your question, but I can tell you that you know, the Cape Cod Commission held public hearings and this, this building is well under construction.
And so it is not, the construction is not contingent upon getting these conservation restrictions? If the construction's already happening, I sort of thought the idea was the Cape Commission.
The requirement of the Cape Cod Commission is that the conservation restriction have been prepared and reviewed by commission staff and by the Division of Conservation Services prior to construction, to commencement of construction. That was all done. The requirement to have the conservation restriction in place is prior to occupancy of the building. So that will be in about a year. Obtaining approval of a conservation restriction can take some time. As I've indicated, it's already been reviewed by the state, a several month process. It's been re, and that was after it was reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission. This has been now approved by the Conservation Commission. And we also have to send it for approval to the federal government, actually, because the National Institute of Standards and Technology, which is an arm of the Department of Commerce, paid for substantial portion of another building on the Quissette campus. And therefore they have a lien for a period of time and need to approve this restriction. They have also informally done so already. We will get their signature as the next step after the selectman's approval. So in all of the conservation restrictions that HOE has placed on the property, and you can see where they are, providing a buffer, a very substantial buffer to all the houses along the Woods Hole Road and to the road itself. Those have all been put in place, I believe, after construction commenced.
So has this also gone to the planning board? I mean, it seems like a huge project for this to be the first time any town, with the exception of the Conservation Restriction and Conservation Commission. This is the first time I know of any town entity that's seen this plan.
The planning board would have made the referral to the Cape Cod Commission and would have obviously had contact, but the and I believe that site plan review occurred, although I didn't handle that Doug, so I'm not certain. But this project, because the Oceanographic is an exempt organization, does not require a special permit. It of course got a building permit. And as I said, the Butters to the property and the town itself, of course, had noticed, the planning department certainly had noticed of the Cape Cod Commission action. It was a full development of regional impact review by the Cape Cod Commission.
And my final question is, it is in a area that I think has been used by many people as a walking path. I think always at the permission of HOE, that many people walk that path there. I noticed the new conservation restriction does not allow the public to go into the new conservation area. So this will be a loss for many people who walk that path. And they will.
I don't think that's really correct impression, Doug.
Okay, great.
The, the Oceanographic is not doing anything to change its welcoming of the public to use the substantial paths that extend through its, its campus, including all the way over to Oyster Pond Road, as you know, to the to the northeast.
Okay, so this is.
And the, the conservation restriction itself does not it does not provide for public access. In other words, a conservation restriction may or may not provide for public access as a condition of the approval. None of HOE's conservation restrictions and many other restri, conservation restrictions do not provide for public access. But that does not mean that the Oceanographic is in any way changing its friendly policy that has allowed the public to access the paths that you're referring to.
Great, thank you.
I just want to add that there are restrictions on access to the campus during COVID. And also there is the potential during a national emergency to have to close off the campus because of its involvement with the Department of Defense. Just wanted for a full, full statement of that.
No, thank you for that clarification. Doug Brown?
And I was going to ask a similar question. And I looked in, in section 14 miscellaneous, it says, pre-existing public rights. Approval of this conservation restriction pursuant to section 32 of chapter 94 of the Massachusetts General Laws by any municipal officials and by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs is not to be considered as representing the existence or non-existence of any pre-existing rights of the public, if any in and to the premises. And any such pre-existing rights of the public, if any, are not affected by the granting of this conservation restriction. But I guess if people have been walking there, they don't lose those rights by this. Is that what, is that what that means, Bob?
I know it does. It means that if people did have rights, the granting of the restriction wouldn't change them. All use of the paths on HOE's property has been permissive. And as I just said, there could be circumstances that HOE would have to make changes to, to that. I'd also point out that the land in question is registered land, so that adverse possession and prescriptive easements cannot be gained even by decades of use. So that's just a response to your question. There are not existing public rights to use the paths. They are owned by and controlled by the Oceanographic. The Oceanographic has to date welcomed people who responsibly use those paths. And that, other than the circumstances that I just described, and I don't think COVID makes a difference to that, but I don't know. There's, this does not represent any change in policy. This is simply a setting aside of land that protects a vernal pool, is a buffer to neighbors, is a requirement for a building which serves the public good. And is the same request that has been approved previously by the Board of Selectmen, resulting in the protected areas that are indicated on this plan.
Great.
Do we have, do we have authority to request that the paths be accessible to the public? I mean, especially if it's something that's been used regularly? Is that something we can negotiate about?
Do you want to answer that, Bob?
Well, I, I would say that the selectman, of course, can ask for anything. I would consider it shocking if the selectman were to deny the request for approval of this restriction tonight. You often approve conservation restrictions that do not provide for public access. If this were a situation where somebody was concerned about getting a tax benefit, you get more of a tax benefit if you allow public access, but that is not a requirement. It's not a requirement of the state that there be public access. I've given you important reasons why the Oceanographic would probably decline such such a condition. They would need to consider whether they would satisfy the Cape Cod Commission's requirement by a monetary contribution of off-site open space somewhere else. They're not, they don't have to solve this obligation with, with this, but it is what they've always done and it makes the best sense.
Okay, thank you for that.
Doug Jones, did I see one other, your hand raised one more time?
Yeah, it's only tangentially related. There's no need for a request for a variance to the Flow Neutral Bylaw because there's HOE has its own treatment system. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's not connected to the municipal sewer at all, but it has advanced treatment.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Ahmed? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I guess I would move approval.
Patterson, second.
Okay, so Brown is moving the motion. Patterson, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Go ahead, Sam.
I think we have to remember just how good a community citizen HOE is for Falmouth. So I think these suspicions about them, taking some kind of action that would prohibit public access in this particular area. It's not, I don't think that's in good spirit right now. Really appreciate their contributions to the town and Attorney Ahmed has assured us that they don't tend to, they don't intend to close off those walking paths.
I agree with that.
Doug Jones?
I know we intended to be suspicious. I was just clarifying the use of the property and want to make sure that this property was not right on top of where the paths were. I mean, HOE is fairly new to town. I think they've only been here like two or three years, right?
Yeah, we're, we're still sussing them out, so.
I agree in whole heart with what Mr. Patterson said, and I did not, I hope there's not an intention and implication that I was being suspicious of HOE.
No, I, I think these are all good questions that people have asked of us, you know, as they see these big projects happen. Because HOE does occupy some of the most beautiful and really does a good job of maintaining some of the most beautiful space in town. So you know, it's meaningful to folks. So if there's no further discussion, I would ask you each to vote by roll call. So Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Okay, next we have under reoccurring recommended filming of 57th Annual Virtual Christmas Parade Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, Saturday, November 14th, 2020. This is something that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, just to get a feeling for what the board's thoughts were. And Michael Casparian from the Chamber of Commerce in Falmouth put together the appropriate, welcome, Michael, put together the appropriate paperwork that has been reviewed by town staff and is before us this evening to have a vote by this board. So let me start by asking, are there any initial questions or concerns from this board now that Michael is here?
How are you going to keep the secret location?
Yeah, it won't be a secret, but I can assure you Chief Dunn will make sure that it will be secure.
Okay.
No, I think it's a, it's a very thorough application and we talked about it at length before and Michael, the chamber and everybody involved did a lot of the pre-leg work to make sure, like you said, the fire, the police department knew what was going on and could be a partner in this. So if there are no questions for Michael, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Okay, Brown, just remember Doug, you just need your name for the record when you move approval.
Doug Brown moves approval.
I read a second from Sam. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you so much, Michael. It's really exciting. And do you know how many, how many floats do you think you might have?
I think we're going to have between 30 and 40 groups, between walking groups and, and floats. Again, it's going to be mostly local groups. We're not inviting any of the folks, the big groups, obviously because of COVID, that we've paid in the past. It's going to be, the response has been really positive from people that we've put out who have participated.
the response has been really positive from people that we've put out, um, who have participated in the past. So it's gonna be great. It's gonna be a very, um, local, community-oriented parade. It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Great, thank you. Really wonderful undertaking and just the kind of, you know, spirit event that we really need during these times. So thank you for being creative about it.
Yeah, we'll look forward to seeing you all there too.
Yeah, you'll cheer us up.
We've choreographed the dance, so we will be doing your intro. Very good.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Take care.
Okay.
Um, next we have, um, new recommended, which is parking lot rental for wedding ceremony, Turner, um, Manot Beach East Lot, Saturday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, four to eleven P M. Um, and we, uh, we had some feedback just about, uh, from Maggie Clayton about the number of parking spots. And just taking a look here.
In the application, there did seem to be a little bit of a double statement. One saying that there may not be enough spaces and they, it was first come, first served, and the second was suggesting we could get someone to hold the spaces. And, uh, I'm not sure which one we were, we'd be suggesting.
I don't think we would hold the spaces. I don't remember any time that we've ever done that for another event. I think people roll the dice a little bit when they decide to hold it at the public, at a public beach. Um, but your memory is better than mine, Doug, but I don't recall a time when we've ever indicated that we would hold spots.
I agree.
And this permit actually has a condition. This says, public parking is on a first come, first served basis.
Yep.
Right.
The condition number three says if there'll be a need to arrange for a tenant to reserve the parking spaces.
Yes. Yeah, it's a little contradictory, so, um, I would suggest if we remove number three and make number four number three, because that's more appropriate. Shuttle van is recommended.
Is the request for the parking lot to hold the wedding or the beach?
It is for, well, that's interesting, right? It says parking lot. Let's see if there's any further. It says, um, for use of
Oh.
the parking lot at Manot Beach further down in the emails, one from Phyllis. So I think it's just, um, so maybe we can just clean that up for clarification.
The reason is that they want to have the wedding at the Manot Yacht Club, which has little or no parking. So they want to park at the east side of the beach. So I think they probably are hoping and counting on, uh, reserved spaces. I don't know if that's possible.
I don't think we've ever done that, and I don't know who the attendant.
I think it's a very, very small cost for the service, actually. For forty cars.
Right, because they would be getting ten dollars from each car. That's four hundred.
This is seventy-five dollars is what the fee is.
Right.
So what, what I would suggest is you table this and, and get a little bit more clarity, because I would not want to set a precedent where we're allowing, um, we're reserving spots at the beach. Again, I don't really know how that would necess- to stand out and enforce that. It's still September, September is still beautiful weather here. So perhaps we can ask for, uh, Phyllis or Diane to get back in touch with the applicant to confirm what is possible.
Could whether the beach, whether the, uh, school lots be used instead?
But then they can't walk to Manot Yacht Club.
Well, they're suggesting a shuttle.
Shuttle.
Oh, right. Yeah, East Falmouth School, maybe. That's a long ride. Or, or we could get back to the applicant and say, we want to just let you know that, you know, these spots may or may not be available. You're willing to, you know, you're welcome to use the spots if they're there, but we can't reserve them.
Right. Right, that, that's why I'm saying, I think we, let's, we, we have plenty of time. This is for September of next year. I think we have time to go back to the applicant and just clarify what is in fact possible.
We leave the lots open that late?
Yes, I think, I think eleven o'clock, um, and some of them don't get closed at all because of fishing. Um, and Manot might be one of the ones that in the summer doesn't get locked or gets locked very late, uh, maybe about eleven o'clock. I think, I think Manot is one of the lots that doesn't get closed because of night fishing there.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Um, so what's the board's pleasure with this?
I think we should just give the, make it clear the disclaimer that, uh, the lot, the, the lot might be full and you might have to make other arrangements at the last minute, if they're gonna depend on that. So maybe they should think it through.
Okay, so are we suggesting a vote on this or a continued communication with them?
I would suggest more communication.
Yeah. At a minimum, I, I, at a minimum, I think we should drop the original, uh, condition number three. So that we're not suggesting that any kind of spaces will be reserved.
Okay. So, um, Julian, could we, with that, with everything that you've heard from us, can we get back to this applicant? And, um, Peter, did you have something to say?
No.
Okay, sorry, your box just lit up. I didn't know if there was other information. Uh, I think it makes sense not to vote on this with, um, the language right now doesn't even seem like it's something that we would, we would be able to accommodate. So let's get back to the applicant perhaps and, uh, we can, um, either come back with a more clear plan of what they're looking for. Julian?
Well, we'll definitely do that.
Thank you.
Carry that to the board's, uh, forthcoming agenda.
Yeah, I, I think we should touch base with, uh, our town council too, because if we're actually sort of renting out parking spaces, there might be some kind of lease issues associated with doing that. You know, if we have an event, we're allowing them to use the event and adjacent facilities.
Be happy to check on that as well.
Great.
Uh, uh, again, I, that's why I think it's critical that it's first come, first served. We're not reserving, uh, for a private event.
Right, we've, we've never done that. That would be a strange, uh, business to get into. Nancy?
And wouldn't there be a liability if we, um, let them come in and say we're letting, we're charging them and they're using the parking lot for that private event?
Well, sometimes, I mean, we do charge people for the permits to have their weddings on the beach.
But that's not how I read this.
That's not what they're, right. That's not what they're asking for here.
They want to use the parking lot.
Yes.
About that.
Yeah, I think we need to have Frank look at it. It isn't anything we've been asked, um, at least in my recent memory, so I do think.
The weddings usually, this, it's just the time of the ceremony. It's a much more, it's a much more restricted time. Typically, it's about two hours total that the cars are there. They leave, this is for, I think, was it four to eleven?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, seven hours. The chances they're actually gonna leave at eleven, right on the dot after, at a wedding reception. Uh, and the condition they're gonna be in with the leaving the wedding reception, I think there are quite a few issues that I have with granting this.
So would this even need to come before us if it goes back to them and, and the answer is, um, you, it, you have to take a chance. We're not gonna reserve them. Is there even a permit for that? I mean, why would they even need it? It's, it's first come, first served like any other parking lot.
That, that's what I would suggest it should be. You know, that's how the schools do it, because, uh, when I got married, I asked permission to park some cars at, uh, Falmouth, uh, School. And they said, well, we don't specifically give that permission. You're welcome to, it's public town land. You're welcome to use it if you like. But we can't guarantee you that you can use it, just that it's, you know, come, come and go as you please, but we can't help you specifically.
Right, so I think we need to get that message to the applicant that we don't reserve spaces. So it would be as Nancy and Doug are pointing out, first come, first serve and, and, you know, from there, that's sort of on them and their guests to, to park accordingly. But you're right, Nancy, it wouldn't come back to us unless they completely amended it to be a ceremony on the beach, you know, in accordance with some of those conditions. But, um, okay, so.
At the same time, I wouldn't discourage them from using it, because it's better than having the cars all over the road, especially those little tiny dirt roads over there by the Manot Yacht Club.
Right, okay. Um, so if we can just convey that, Julian, thank you.
Will do.
Next, we have a discussion update on COVID nineteen issues. Do we have Scott? There he is. Good evening, Scott, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Hit me, all right?
Weekend.
Good. Uh, Tom, Tom, you wanna share screen? Well, go ahead and, uh, put it on the screen for me. So I figured I'd start off with the chart that comes out every Wednesday. Uh, just to let you know, every Wednesday, it's the two full weeks prior to the Wednesday. So this is September twenty-seventh to, uh, October tenth. So it's not Wednesday to Wednesday. So it's, sometimes it's a few days off. Um, our current case count is two hundred and eighty-seven. Uh, and you can see a lot more red than you had seen previously. You see the reds are sort of creeping in. You see it on the South Shore, the North Shore, Metro Boston, Worcester, uh, South Coast. Uh, a lot of them might be college towns. I know one town in particular, Middleton up in the north, uh, has a prison which had an outbreak, which counted a lot of cases, so. Um, but Falmouth specific, we're still in the green. We've been in green for a while. And so, you know, you see some yellows are on the Cape now. See, Nantucket's still in the red after the issues they've had. For us to stay in the green, it's basically one point three-three cases per day or less. So about in a two-week span, we need to be around eighteen or less. Uh, if you want to go to the next slide, Tom. So you can see, um, this is the state data that comes out every week. Um, I just cut and pasted on here. And you can see that we've been either gray or green, um, since, uh, the chart came out sometime in August. Uh, I circled the positivity rate. You can see that it's been less than one for that timeframe, and that's a very key number, so that's really good. I also circled the fact that in fourteen days in that timeframe, two thousand four hundred and nine tests. That's a lot of tests. That's twelve hundred a week. So it's gonna be hard for us to be in gray with that quantity of tests, if that makes sense. Now, you know, the more you test, you tend to find more asymptomatics. So, um, you know, we're, the past week since, I think, um, well, today we're two eighty-seven. And you can see on the fourteenth, we were two eighty-six. So we've had a pretty good run over the last, uh, half a week or so. So that's a, that's always encouraging. Um, and you can see that the state, uh, average daily incident rate is eight point seven. So the state would actually put themselves on the COVID naughty list. If, you know how Massachusetts has the states that you would need to quarantine from? Massachusetts would meet the quiet criteria on that, so. Um, the state in general has had some increase. If you see it every day, they've been in the, you know, seven hundred range. Uh, as opposed to the two to three hundred we had earlier, or maybe late summer would be the best way to put it. Um, compared to Barnstable County, we're kind of average with Barnstable County. They were point eight-eight for positivity and three point two per hundred thousand, and we were three point four. So we're pretty consistent with the county. Uh, it's just states had some issues in, in, in certain places. Uh, next slide, Tom. Um, this one I always find encouraging. Um, it's a little fuzzy, I'm sorry, but, um, starting around late May, each week, each dot represents a different week and how many cases we had that week. And you can see that from about the beginning of June. So last week, we've been averaging less than ten. The one, the heavy one that was on the high side was the, uh, uh, long-term care facility and the lifeguards in the same week. So you can see without exceeded the ten. But you can see we've sort of been in that five to ten range on some weeks and less than five on other weeks. Uh, with an average over the last month of maybe around five to eight cases. Uh, like I said, this week it's been a pretty good week. Hopefully that's below five for the week. That would be encouraging. So, I mean, as far as cases, that's where we're at. Um, you know, if you guys have any specific questions on COVID?
Any specific, yeah, Doug Jones, go ahead.
So Scott, I'm not sure you can answer this, but my question is both the state and the, in town, any idea of what percentage of those cases are asymptomatic? That all of a sudden in, for both us in the state, we went from the, the state went from three hundreds to seven hundreds. We went from the two or three up to this eight or nine.
Yeah.
Is there a chance that, you know, half of them are actually asymptomatic, because as you said before, people are getting tested for medical, for medical procedures. They're sick because they're infected, but they're not sick because they're asymptomatic. And a lot of the colleges, the, in, in the Boston area, there are so many kids getting tested for colleges that are discovered or infected, but they wouldn't have been discovered because they're asymptomatic.
Yeah, the answer is yes, but I can't give you a percentage.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I definitely see it in our cases, uh, people going for procedures and, uh, either they were infected a while back and just, because you can, at the beginning of this, remember, um, you couldn't get out of isolation unless you had two negative COVID tests. And as it was going for weeks and weeks and weeks, they found that that wasn't gonna work, because you were still shedding the virus particles and the RNA that's associated with it. So they, um, so you do have a lot of the asymptomatic. Either they had it, you know, maybe earlier in the season, or, you know, I guess maybe there's a possibility of a false positive or just asymptomatic or whatever. But yeah, I mean, we're testing a lot. The towns that are turning red, if you put a lot of them and you, and you overlaid colleges on there, yes. If you, if you overlaid, you know, we have a lot of healthcare in Falmouth. We have a hospital, we have a lot of doctors' offices. Uh, we have a lot of medical professionals and they're being tested routine. So yeah, we're picking up a lot more asymptomatic people. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
You would see, you know, you would look at hospitalizations of, yeah, sorry, you'd see hospitalizations are on the Cape, at least have been pretty good, and that would be an indicator that you were getting more of the general population. Uh, Cape Cod Healthcare in Barnstable County don't, do not see a lot of community spread occurring right now in the Cape. So.
Uh, Doug Brown?
But do you think that, uh, have you heard any kind of indication that we're gonna go back to keeping track of the one-time test people and separating them out from the multiple-time test people? Because I think that's
They do.
It's kind of skewing the numbers.
Um, they do. If you look at the state's web, I, I don't, I mean, I'd have to share my screen, but the states will tell you in the states, the newly tested people. Like today, I think it was probably fifteen thousand newly tested. So yeah, they do, yes, they do, they do spread that out. If you look at the daily dashboard, they give you percent positivity of, of new tests versus people that are being tested on a routine basis. Because obviously, if you test on a routine basis, you're not testing somebody who's been in close contact or have symptoms. So your, your positivity would go down as you just gen- generally test people.
But that's what the state's using for their, their big number, which is making our state look better than it is probably, right?
Um, well, I mean, maybe, yeah, I mean, perhaps. I mean, we're testing a lot, I mean, it, I think you, that's why I look at, well, yeah, I don't know the answer, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Scott?
So this next chart, if I may, Megan?
Yeah, oh, please do, yeah.
The flu clinic. I, I, I'm sorry about my, sorry about my art, but you can see people would be flowing through the red lines. So we're not gonna drive them through the trees into Falmouth Inn. So I don't know how I messed that one up. So we, we, we're actually gonna have them turn a little earlier than that. We're also not gonna send them to Chief Dunn's office either. But we're gonna have people, um, we've already had everybody sign up, so we've already had two hundred slots and we've had the two hundred people sign up. And just to keep them off the streets, we're gonna average about, about fifteen to twenty cars every fifteen minutes. And you can see we'll snake them around, and that'll help if there's a backlog for some reason. Somebody needs a little extra help in the car, getting their shirt on, getting to the short sleeves or something like that. And then at the end, it, actually, obviously, the rec center is a little bit, I mean, the senior center is a little beyond that construction project, so we're, we're not gonna, so it's an old picture, but we're gonna split them off, and you can see the little blue, uh, green rectangles, and there'll be a nurse on either side of the car. There'll be four nurses, so that people that are coming in, we have a lot of people coming in and, uh, uh, husband and wife sort of set, and that, maybe their kids. We'll have a nurse on either side of the car, two lines. Then they would go out towards Dillingham, and anybody who hasn't had a flu shot, we'd like them to stay for fifteen minutes. We'll have that. There's all parking spots down the bottom of the hill, once you go around the bend. And then we'll have somebody stationed there, and then we'll send everybody out Dillingham, so we have all one-way traffic. So.
Great.
Yeah, we had about two hundred, a little over two hundred people register.
Wow, that's, that filled up quickly.
Yeah, we normally have about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty people in a flu clinic. Yeah, it's been a little tricky, because you have to get these, we've reordered these things, well, the V and A orders at Cape Cod Healthcare months ago. So, you know, the demand's out there and, you know, sometimes you, you're giving away, giving back the vaccine when you don't have enough, or if you have too many. And that's normally what happens in a given year with us, but this time we're gonna use them all.
Right. And, uh, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, does that include many schoolchildren? Because I know they're required to.
They are. I think out of that, we had twenty-three, uh, uh, child, so, and I have, I have about eighty, sixty doses maybe for uninsured children of the age of eighteen sent to me by the state. Um, so far I have about twenty-two out of the two hundred are children. But the schools have done their own clinics, so the schools have done some clinics and the pediatricians and stuff, you can go there as well. And of course, we're lucky in Falmouth, we have about of course, we're lucky in Falmouth, we have about what, five pharmacies at least, one, two? Yeah. So we have five pharmacies. So you have not counting convenient MD, there's six. So you have six locations to get your flu shot. So we're, we're pretty much advantageous. You know, to put it in perspective, I think Wellfleet or Eastham, they did over 200 on their flu clinic. Because they don't have as many pharmacies and outlets to get flu shots. So.
Yeah. And just that reminder. So it's not a mad dash at the end. I know you've said it before, Scott, and but you know, that the children are going to be required by that December date.
By the end of the year.
The end of December to have that flu shot for school. So you know, we are already halfway through October and then the holidays come and it gets really busy. So just a reminder to parents and caregivers to just make time for that. So that it's not a mad dash at the end. Anything else for Scott? Great. Thank you very much, Scott. Those graphics are really helpful. I know people have been concerned hearing about the numbers increasing. So just kind of seeing it on paper, I think helps to get across exactly what's going on. Thank you. All right. Have a good night. Okay, next we have interview vote and appoint committee member for Human Services Committee, Ellen O'Donnell. And we have her application. And we saw her earlier, so we know she was present. She was on very early. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you so much. Yes, I've been on the whole thing. It's very interesting.
You don't have to just say that. You're very qualified for the position.
Not at all. It's been very interesting to see everyone and put names to faces too. So thank you, guys.
Well, thank you for your application. We have it in front of us and really great to get someone with the level of experience that you have. Are there any questions for Ellen from the board?
No, it's a well-done application. And I'd be glad to have her join the group.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Great group. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Jones moves and we appoint Ellen O'Donnell to the term ending on June 30, 2021.
Okay, I have a motion a second for the discussion. Seeing none by roll call, Jones.
Jones, I.
Taylor.
Taylor, I.
Patterson.
Patterson, I.
Brown.
Brown, I.
English Broda, I. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
We'll point out unfortunately, this term does end next June, but the interview process is really easy. So we hope you'll come back in June and apply for the full three-year term.
Yes, yes. Thank you all. Look forward to working with the committee for the for the town of Falmouth.
I have a question, not related. If I could, how are you making out with your new location there? Is it almost ready to open?
Yes, it's been a long time coming. We've been working closely with Longfellows and they told us November 2nd. So our CEO, our COO, we've kind of had to stay on top of it for quite a bit. And then with COVID and, you know, picking back up, but we're hopeful. There's floors down, the walls are up. We had our electrician come out and our IT. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And we just got our mobile van out for testing to recovering champions. We'll be doing testing there for their patients resident. So yeah, moving things along.
Appreciate it.
Great. Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you when the committee comes before us for an update.
All right. Great. Thank you all. Stay well.
Congratulations.
You too. Okay, next we're going to have a status report on the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. And I believe Peter is going to sort of walk us through that. We had some questions come in from individuals and the time was sort of just perfect because Peter and Julian had been talking about coming before us. So go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. Yes, the timing of those questions was certainly right on target. And when the board appointed me as your representative to the the management board for the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. It was early in 2019, so I thought I might have provided you a status report earlier, but due to COVID and some other things, there really was not much to report until just recently. So thank you for this opportunity. I will keep it fairly brief, although A, this is some good news. So maybe it's worth spending a little bit of time on and B, because it's new to, you know, to most of us, I think a lot of the board members certainly and the public was well aware of it when it was happening, at least those who are following the water protection issue closely. There's been a bit of a lull. So I thought I'd start with, you know, really an overview and a reminder of what the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund is. And the first thing is it's a mouthful. So I'm going to refer to it as the Cape and Islands Fund, just as a shorthand for this presentation. It was adopted by the Massachusetts Legislature effective July 1, 2019. This act established a new 2.75% excise tax assessed to all lodging establishments on Cape Cod. That includes, but is not limited to the short-term rentals, Airbnb, vacation rental by owners and others, as well as individual homeowners who just do find other means of short-term rentals for their properties. They are also supposed to be paying this excise tax. The proceeds from this new tax are dedicated toward a water quality protection fund for projects for Cape Cod. And I should make a quick note about the islands. So as of this moment, the islands are not participating in this fund. They have the ability to under the state legislation. In order for the islands to participate, they need to have a a water protection plan, a comprehensive wastewater protection plan, which we know of as the 208 plans that the town of Falmouth and other Cape towns have submitted and had approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The islands have not had such plans approved, but if they do, they have the opportunity to join this fund. And obviously, they cannot draw funds from this until they start participating and paying into the fund. The funds that are deposited into the Cape and Islands Fund are held by the Massachusetts Clean Water State Revolving Fund for exclusive use of Cape Cod municipalities. And again, just for ease of speech, I'm going to refer to that state revolving fund, the by shorthand, SRF or State Revolving Fund, to distinguish it from the Cape and Islands Fund. So the projects that are eligible to be funded from these proceeds are set out by the legislation. And and the way the process works, and this again is baked right into the legislation, is that in order for the Cape and Islands Fund to subsidize a project for water quality, that project has to be approved and be included on this state revolving fund intended use plan. So it has to go through that state revolving fund process for approval. And the state has a well-established set of criteria, not only for determining eligibility, but also for ranking the priorities of the projects based on criteria, criteria related to the effectiveness of the project in resolving water quality problems, achieving regulatory compliance. They also look at enforcement actions and whether the project is part of an intermunicipal effort, which provides some credits in the ranking from the state revolving fund. So to get funds from the Cape and Islands Fund, you have to be approved through this state revolving fund. So the role of the management board for the Cape and Islands Fund is to determine the method of subsidy allocation to ensure that there is an equitable distribution of funds to participating municipalities and to ensure funds are spent only for purposes provided by law. That sounds easy enough, but it actually took quite a bit of time. And the key is well, one of, you know, one of the key points that the board has wrestled with has been equitable distribution of funds and and how to meet out those funds, how best to steward those funds. I have to recognize that the lion's share of the work in addressing those issues was done by a subcommittee of the management board. And they they really hashed out some issues and they they looked at a variety of different options and were able to reach a consensus through, you know, significant analysis. And there were several discussions that the full management board had. I should note, I did have a meeting with the town of Falmouth Water Quality Management Committee at which we reviewed the draft regulations that were being considered by the Cape and Islands Fund. And Andrew Gottlieb was kind enough to join us for that meeting and respond, make a presentation and respond to questions from our committee. As many of you may know, Andy Gottlieb is a member of the select board in the town of Bourne, but more relevantly for this purpose, he's also the head of the Association to Preserve Cape Cod and has previously worked for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. So he's deeply immersed in this issue and was able to answer a lot of the questions that the Water Quality Management Committee had. The Water Quality Management Committee fully endorsed the regulations that were subsequently adopted by the Cape and Islands Fund Management Board on October 7.
Andy is a member of the Mashpee Select Board.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Mashpee, not Bourne, of course. So the regulations that were recently adopted by the by the Cape and Islands Fund Management Board calls for subsidy in the form of principal forgiveness over a four-year period. That will be in the form of grants, not loans. There will also be eligibility for subsidy for projects that have already been approved and financed through the state revolving fund at the same percentage subsidy rate. All projects that are funded in a given year will receive equal percentage subsidy. So the way that's going to work is each year, the state revolving fund, as I mentioned, produces an intended use plan. So they dole out the state funds, the state subsidies, both zero low interest or zero interest with or without principal forgiveness through the state revolving fund. They produce that list each year. And the Cape and Islands Fund will use that list in turn to determine what the percent subsidy for that year will be for all projects. But the whatever that percentage is for the Cape and Islands Fund, it will be the same percentage for all projects approved for that year. And really, the hope is that we can have pretty good stability with that percent subsidy rate across fiscal years. Now that's, you know, there are no guarantees that that will work perfectly because that requires quite a bit of forecasting in terms of not just the revenues, which should be the easier side of the equation, but also the expenditures and forecasting when when municipalities will be ready with their projects and when they will be approved on the state revolving fund intended use plan will, you know, will be an art form, I think. But the the goal of that we've talked about with the management board is to keep that as stable as we can. It will help for equity purposes and it will also help for planning purposes. So some of the advantages of the approach that the that the management board has taken with these regulations recently adopted is that there is no application required. And that is obviously possible because these projects will already have gone through the state process, which involves a rigorous application and review. And but it's it's a terrific benefit for everyone because it means that the municipalities don't have to go through a whole extra process for these already very complicated projects to submit another application to another entity for subsidy. They will get dual consideration for both the state revolving fund and the Cape and Islands Fund just with their one submission to the state. So that also keeps overhead down and doesn't require a lot of extra staff that would otherwise have to be secured by the Cape and Islands Fund Management Board. As I mentioned, one of the objectives of this approach is to have predictability and advance notice. The way we envision this timeline happening, the the applications would go to the state revolving fund before town meeting votes. So the approval would be on the intended use plan before the town meeting vote. That would allow each municipality that gets approval from the state revolving fund and the Cape and Islands Fund to know before they go to town meeting, what's the, what's the cost to the taxpayer going to be and what's the cost that will be mitigated by the state revolving fund and what portion of the cost will be subsidized by the Cape and Islands Fund. So the the four-year subsidy, I wanted to just mention why that was, why that was undertaken and what the benefits are. It represents really something of a compromise between the two more obvious approaches that might have been taken. One approach would be to subsidize the project over the life of the loan, which might run 20 to 30 years. And the challenge there is it requires quite a bit of forecasting, right? Because you you approve a project and then you're committed to that project for a lesser amount in this, you know, on a per-year basis, true, but that that approval now has to be part of a 20 to 30-year plan. So that gets more complicated as you get further into the the life of the fund, you know, once you're 10, 20 years into the fund and you're managing a number of, a large number of projects that have previously been approved and in trying to forecast the revenues and expenses for those projects 20 to 30 years into the future becomes becomes challenging. And what that means is when when you have more unknowns with the longer planning horizon, you have to, you have to be cautious, right? And you have to be conservative about your estimates and potentially not allocate all of the revenue that that you think you might have available. So there were some downsides to that longer planning horizon. Likewise, the other extreme of having all of the funds be awarded in a one-year grant would likely limit the subsidy percentage available in a given year because in all likelihood, we're not going to have a smooth dollar amount of requests every year, right? There will be some years that will have a large dollar value of requests coming from one or more communities and other years where we might not have any. So spreading those costs out a little bit, the grants from the fund, spreading those those grants out a little bit over a four-year period allows the fund to smooth that out a little bit and to say, okay, we can commit a large dollar amount over a four-year period. You know, hopefully, we will have some information about what is anticipated in the, you know, in the a four-year time horizon, we'll be better able to predict that than we would a 20 or 30-year time horizon. So altogether, I think this approach creates a strong incentive for towns to approve water quality product projects. It provides another piece, you know, you know, it may be as much as a 25% subsidy for many of these projects as based on the, you know, the, what we know of the the projects that we anticipate being approved and what our forecasts are for the revenues and and that's a significant help to communities and it should incentivize their moving forward with their water quality projects. So the forecast, speaking of forecasting, how much money are we talking about? The forecasts that were prepared as the legislation was under review before it was adopted indicated that we might have $15 million in revenue for this Cape Cod Fund. And with that, the hope was that we would be able to subsidize something on the order of 25% of project costs. And indeed, in the first five months after the excise tax was initiated in July of 2019, we had 7.7 million in actual collections. However, COVID then hit and temporarily shut down lodging altogether. And since June 8th, the lodging has been reopened, but still with some restrictions, particularly as it relates to larger functions and gathering sizes. So the fiscal year 2011 months of collections, instead of bringing in the 15 million that was forecast, brought in only 9.1 million. So not, not a big surprise given COVID, but from the pre-COVID results, it looks like, again, those that $15 million forecast may well have been on track. So I, I, I don't want to, didn't want to end this presentation on a negative note. As I said, this is was a really big story and a really positive development on the wastewater front that we now have this really important new revenue leg in our, in our fiscal stool for, for getting these really critically important water projects approved. And you know, I think that hopefully those revenues will rebound and even, and even if they don't, you know, worst case, we might be at a lower percentage subsidy for some period of time. And even if they don't, you know, worst case, we might be at a lower percentage subsidy for some period of time. But that is certain to rebound as we work through the COVID pandemic.
Thank you, Peter.
That is all I had, and I welcome any questions that you might have, although I'll give myself the caveat that this is an issue that I've been interested in and following for over a decade, but I am by no means an expert in this very complex matter. Happy to entertain your questions.
Thank you. I think it's really helpful. A lot of folks wondered, you know, there was a lot of buzz when it went into effect. And then obviously COVID kind of took all the air out of the room. So, you know, seeing that half-year or five-month projection does seem as if it was on target for that 15 million. So, but even in the 9 million, it's 9 million more than we would have had to go towards some of these projects in the future. So, any questions for Peter on his presentation? Sam Patterson?
Yes, Peter, is your presentation going to be on the website, the town's website?
I can certainly put it up there. Sure.
Thank you.
Doug?
Could you remind us of the makeup of the board and whether, are you a voting member?
Yes, the makeup of the board is there is one voting member for each Cape Cod municipality. And there is a provision for the islands to have voting membership as well if they if they do choose to join the fund.
Right. Interesting, Lo. The Vineyard has, I think, six towns and Nantucket is just one town. So that'll be interesting if they do join.
Any other questions for Peter? Great. Sam, did you?
No, thanks, Peter, for representing us.
Yeah, thank you and for sharing that. That's really helpful. And where would, if it's going to be on the website for folks to look at, do they just Google the?
I think we'll put it on the, I'll talk to the Chair of the Water Quality Management Committee and see if he's agreeable with putting it there. The Barnstable County Commission also maintains a website for the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. So you can find meeting agendas and minutes and regulations and legislation is all posted on the Cape Cod Commission's site.
Great. Thank you very much, Peter. It's really informative. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, we have next vote to approve the Select Board Five-Year Strategic Plan for 2021-2025. And everyone had a copy of this draft in their packet. Anything that we see that needs to be changed or we need to talk about?
Looks like what we agreed on.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept it from Doug Brown, a second from Sam Patterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Julian, something that I'm just thinking of is I know that my annual report that I sent to Diane said on it FY 2020 to FY 2025. Can we just make sure that that gets changed?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Just again, thank Peter and all the staff that have worked on making this a nice readable document. Because I know that basically it was a lot of rough notes after our strategic planning meeting.
Yes, yeah, great, great point, Sam. Takes a lot to put it together, even in non-COVID years.
I'm sure I was going to say things are considerably rearranged indeed. And thank you to Peter for the assistance, Jennifer Mullen as well. And thank you to the board for finding the time during this challenging year to have the strategic plan retreat and continue this excellent process, which is critical and priority setting for us. So thank you for that.
And just to add to that one quick point, I think this was a great example of why we do this every year. Because the strategic plan that we came up with and priorities we came up with last year, you know, those things are all still relevant and important. But the whole world has been turned upside down with COVID-19. And we really do have to reassess in the moment, reprioritize. And this exercise, doing it each year allows us to do that. Hopefully, in most years, it's not something as momentous as this, but things come along that certainly shape the work that we're doing. So this year in particular, it struck me how useful the yearly exercise is. So thank you to everyone for engaging in it.
You know, when you mentioned Jennifer Mullen, it made me remember about the comprehensive financial plan that you guys have submitted and you received the award for. And I know it's not really on the agenda, but I would have mentioned it at announcements. Would you mind just recapping what that was and where the award came from? You would, Julian?
Certainly happy to do so. I have a little note in my concluding report to the board. But as you know, we issued a release on that. And it is the, I want to make certain I get the, it's a long title. It's a Certificate of Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And it specifically is for the town's comprehensive annual financial report, which of course, this board made an annual priority and continues to be a priority in your five-year strategic plan. Thank you. It's a general recognition by a national organization of the quality of financial reporting and transparency and the management of financial matters on a local municipal level. So it's a much coveted award. We have won it. I believe this is the, perhaps I'll double check that, but it's the perhaps the third or fourth year that we have achieved that distinction. And we want to continue to provide that detailed and helpful financial information not only to members of this board, the finance committee at town meeting, but to residents in general. So my compliments and thanks to the board and to Jennifer Mullen for her fine work and that of her staff and for this board's support of such an important process which results in national recognition, I believe, well deserved.
That's great news. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have minutes of meetings. September 21, 2020, public session. Did anyone have any? Sam?
Yes, on page 10, there's no Select Board action noted under number seven, item number seven. And I think that's something we want to see in the notes unless there was no action, but there was no mention of that. On page 10, under the Human Services Committee, we have a candidate present.
Let me just get to there. So number seven.
It's actually listed at number six. The action was listed under number six's item, Sam?
Ah, missed that. Okay, yes, it included both. So maybe the action should be moved down, but that's all right.
Okay, but maybe we can just clarify that.
Yeah. Otherwise, I found it to be substantially correct and I would move approval and release it public.
I have one other correction if we could. On public comment, number five, if I'm on the right date here, this is the September 21st. The spelling of Mary Bunker Rhyther is not corrected at the beginning. B-U-N-K-E-R-R-Y-T-H-E-R, I believe.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I have a motion from Sam. Do I have a second?
Jones, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you. Any individual selectmen's reports? Mr. Jones?
I actually have two questions, not really a report. The first, a neighbor of mine was wondering about the timing of construction on residential houses. At what time can it start? And whether anybody on the board knew, maybe Mr. Brown knows, is there a limit as to what hour people could start doing construction?
7:00 AM, I believe, is the legal start time. And not on Sunday unless you're working for a family member or relative and not being paid.
Great. A second has to do with open meeting law question that I was approached by the Mayflower Power Group wanting to meet with me individually. And my understanding is that they could meet with two of us, but meeting with more of us than that would be a violation of open meeting law. So I got back to them and directed them to reach out to the Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you, Doug, which they did. And I cannot meet this, they want to meet this week. I cannot meet this week. Nancy had indicated she could. I had checked to see if Doug Brown as Vice Chair was able to. But yes, I think that you really raise a good point. We need to just be aware sometimes that serial outreach that folks or organizations do can become problematic. So I think we just want to clarify and do exactly what Doug did. If we're approached by an organization or an individual to speak about a subject, we just really want to touch base and make sure that, we've had this happen before where folks, and again, they're not ill-intentioned. Some of them don't understand open meeting law. But, you know, they try to have the conversation with Nancy and then with me and then with Sam to get a feel for the board. And that is problematic. So just, that's a good reminder that Doug brings to us that for those issues to circle back, to make sure that those conversations aren't happening.
Which is why I reached out to you, Megan, because I thought it was odd that she was just emailing me. And there's no indication that she's emailing anybody else.
Correct.
I thought that was odd, which is why I went to you first.
Yeah, thank you. And my email was the same. It was just to me. Or else I would have forwarded that out as well. So, yeah, we just want to be, I think, really careful about that. So thank you, Doug. And let me just say, on that particular issue, I don't think we've heard anything back yet. So we'll see where that goes.
We are on for tomorrow at 3:00.
Oh, you are? I didn't see that. Okay.
Yeah. And either Julian or Peter will be joining us, I believe.
Great, thank you. I didn't see that last piece. Yeah, go ahead, Julian.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that clarification. Select Board Member Taylor. I just wanted to take a moment to clarify because just to underscore what you mentioned, Madam Chair, that some individuals are of the opinion, outside individuals who want to speak with members of the board and might prefer to take the approach of speaking privately, that while they can reach out and do as has been indicated, have a meeting with two members of the board, should they determine after that that they would then like to meet with two additional members of the board, that also, that is an open meeting law violation as well, as you just indicated. And I just wanted to underscore that in case any individuals listening are not fully aware. So while they can speak with a minority of members of the board, in this case two, to step forward and then try to meet with two additional and then the one remaining, thinking that they've covered everyone, once you go past those first two members, whoever it happens to be, the Chair and the Vice Chair, or in this case, the Vice Chair and the Select Board Member Taylor, that is as far as they can go without coming to a formal business meeting and being on your agenda.
Thank you.
More productive at a regular meeting, but I don't want to deny them the chance to ask their important questions. It may help them build their plan.
And my assumption is that, at least at this point, Doug, you and I would then report back to this board anything that transpired at that meeting.
Right. And it's just going to be informational. We'll ask our questions and they'll ask theirs, but it won't be any kind of, I'm not going to give them any indication of what I feel one way or another. It's just information sharing.
And there's no, we can't make any commitments on behalf of the board as to when it's coming in front of us or really anything else.
Correct.
Sam?
Yeah, but there's nothing that prohibits them from putting together a fact sheet and sending it to each one of us as general information.
Correct. And we can, yeah, anybody can send us any bit of information they want. They can send us their opinion. It's the response and the interaction we then have with individuals. So they're not violating the open meeting law by reaching out to all of us and by sending us information. The violation would be on us if we were to engage in the process that Julian just described. But I think it's helpful for individuals to know that, you know, that's the issue that we're looking at. And so, once you've met with the two, that's sort of the end of the conversation until you come to a public meeting. And just so that the public knows, it's very normal for there to sometimes be two members that might meet on a particular issue to do a little bit of a deeper dive and gathering information to bring back to the board. Because our time at these meetings is sometimes very limited, it's helpful for complex issues to get that information and for that one board member or two board members to bring that back to the board. And again, as everyone has noted, there's no decision-making here. There's no deal-making that takes place during that meeting. It's just a gathering of information. So thank you both for making time for that. Any, Doug, was that the extent of those two comments? Okay, Sam, you had a report?
Last week, I met with the Finance Committee and they finished up reviewing the capital budget. And really, Jennifer Mullen and Julian were there as resources. And I don't think they really found anything that was a stumbling block. So they pretty much are supportive of those various items that are proposed. So that happened last week. Also, CPC met again. They're dealing with the fact that they're going to be postponing the review of different project proposals. They're trying to just deal with urgent projects. And so they've got it down to just a few that might be coming up at the April Town Meeting. So that's going on in that committee. The Affordable Housing Summit was held last Wednesday. We had, I think, four great presenters. Peter Johnson Staub gave us a nice background on 40Bs and the different types of 40Bs. Laura Schufeld gave us a kind of a state perspective. She's the Executive Director of the Mass Housing Partnership. Then Senator Jamie Eldridge came and talked about state initiatives and projects that he knew up in the area of, let's see, of Concord and Lexington and
Acton.
Acton, thank you. I couldn't come up with that last one. And then the meeting was capped off by a presentation by Alyssa Magnata, who is the CEO of the Housing Assistance Corporation here in Falmouth. And she really did a great job, I think, of giving us a historical perspective on the systematic racism and housing discrimination that's been going on really since back in the early 1900s, so-called redlining of arts and studies that basically dissuaded them from being able to get decent home loan coverage. Therefore, you know, tended to turn those areas into sort of somewhat low-income lighted communities. And of course, they pointed out how important it is to have secure housing for people of various minority groups. And so how this kind of influences where people have ended up today. And she pointed out that many of us who are sort of middle-class US citizens whose immigration roots are way in the past, you know, we've managed to, through our families, to reach a reasonably significant financial kind of well-being and security. But that's not true of a lot of the populations within the United States. It's certainly housing has essentially been part of that sort of systematic overhead that many people have had to bear and have not been able to get free of. So I'll just mention it that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sam. Doug?
Lucky enough to participate in the Cape Cod Commission's Climate Action Meeting that took place last week. It was kind of a difficult one to do because in the right in the middle of the afternoon. But I thought I was going to just tune in and listen while I was working. And it was very low attendance. It was only five people at one point in the meeting. And I was the only one from Falmouth. So I turned on my screen and jumped in and shared what we're doing in Falmouth and our incentives and our investments in solar cars, I mean, electric cars and the charging station and the plan for building, potentially building freestanding solar on school property parking lots. And, you know, I mentioned all the things that we're doing and our vulnerability assessment and so forth. So it was good to be a part of that. And it was actually a kind of a good chance to really get a lot of good feedback from the staff because it was a little extra time because of the short attendance. And I did get to put a plug in for our Falmouth Water Stewards Water Quality Monitoring Program of the freshwater ponds. And I pointed out to the Cape Cod Commission the need for coordinator of all the data from all these volunteer groups that are doing this pond watching. And to my surprise, Christie Senatory said that they're actually already taking an interest in.
And to my surprise, Christie Senatori said that they're actually already taking an interest in that and already started to, uh, reach out to those groups. So that was actually a good thing. So glad I got to be a part of that.
Great. Thank, thank you, Doug. Thanks for representing us and to connect with folks on that, that issue. Um, anyone else? Um, Julian, Town Managers' Report?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. I was pleased to attend the, uh, two committee, uh, matters that, uh, Select Board Member Patterson mentioned, the Finance Committee's meeting last week, as well as the Affordable Housing Committee. And, uh, uh, those were, uh, very informative, as he has noted. Also, as the Boards Aware Town Hall reopened to routine public access on, uh, this past Tuesday, October 13th, the transition was relatively uneventful, given the opportunity we had to work closely with employees in providing important social distancing upgrades at Town Hall, as well as the necessary signage and public notice that all visitors are required to wear masks or face coverings while in Town Hall and to observe social distancing and making every effort to keep everyone safe and healthy during this continued pandemic. Also, all is moving forward for the planned November 16th Town Meeting, including 10 warrant articles with scheduled, uh, and scheduled to convene at 7:00 PM in the, uh, Falmouth High School Field House. We are working with our sound consultant to further enhance, uh, the internal sound system. And we'll be making available KN95 masks for town meeting members as suggested, uh, by Select Person Patterson, uh, at, uh, in your most recent meeting. And I've already mentioned, uh, and thank you, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Brown for raising that. The, uh, uh, Certificate of Achievement, uh, for Excellent Fun in Financial Reporting. And the board meets again, uh, a week from tonight. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. And I alluded to it earlier, but just so the board knows, I did, um, draft, um, a statement on behalf of the board, uh, for the annual, annual town report. Um, uh, the last three years, I've really focused on kind of detailed components. This year being a bit different, it was more of really just a thematic, um, sort of overview of the ways in which COVID-19 has impacted the town and how the town has responded to it. Um, and, and really I felt it was appropriate from this board to, um, send a message really of gratitude to all the folks in town who are town staff and citizens who live here and work in various ways that have, um, been impacted from business owners, families, uh, first responders by COVID and just how, um, incredibly, um, I think impressed, and I believe I speak for this whole board, um, when I say that, you know, the way this town has just stepped up to take on this challenge and the result that has come out where we see that we, we manage numbers even in a tourist, um, economy and we have been able to keep things relatively on track. Um, and, you know, have tried to support businesses and, and our schools and families and the gap that the service center filled. I mean, just tremendous, tremendous efforts by everyone, both staff and, um, everyday citizens. So that was the message that I sent on behalf of the board for our annual town report.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn, Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Nice.
Bye.
Good night. Thank you, Peter.
Hi, Peter.